And welcome to the March 26, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting for the City of East Lansing. Mr. Bartley, would you please take role?
Commissioner Chapin.
Here.
Commissioner Denault.
Here.
Commissioner Hendricks. Commissioner Lapine. Commissioner Overby.
Here.
Commissioner Putz.
Here.
Commissioner Sebeluski.
Here.
Vice Chair Wagner.
Here.
Chair Sullivan. We have Quorum.
Excellent. I am stepping in tonight for Chairperson Sullivan, so please have a little patience and grace with me if I mess something up and if I mess up. Thank you, Landon, for the Robert's Rules here. If I just hit me or something, if I need to go back or something. So we are now going to move to 1.2 of the agenda, which is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Overby.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Putz. Any discussion? Let's have a vote. Those in favor of approving the tonight's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those approve, or those opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to 1.3, approval of the minutes from the March 12, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Denault.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Putz. Any discussion? Let's vote. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Excellent. Moving on to number two, committee reports. We have three different committee reports. I'm not sure how much we have for each one, so we'll just take them individually. 2.1, the age-friendly communities. Commissioner Chapin.
Yeah, we had a meeting on March 20th. Good group, working, I think, quite effectively. We really filled our space, our agenda, with a presentation from the Tri-County Office on Aging, which services Ingham, Clinton, and Eaton Counties. Good conversation. They talked about their services, their program, their network. And then we had some pretty good conversation at the end of the PowerPoint presentation, talking about the importance of agencies, just like that, serving, you know, sort of an underprivileged population, if you will, or under-supported population, and how important they are in our current climate. So, good conversation, good presentation. And later that day, Landon participated in a national conference, the AARP Conference, online, and we were quite proud and pleased that he represented the City of East Lansing. So, would you like to comment on that? I've teed you up perfectly.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, I only made up about eighty percent of my presentation, but I'm just kidding. It was a panel at the National Forum on Age-Friendly Communities, and just sort of updating the group, I guess it was about eight hundred attendees, on what various communities around the country are doing for age-friendly, East Lansing being one, the others on the panel were Albuquerque, and, oh, it's escaping me, a little town in Massachusetts, Chelmsford, Massachusetts. So just sort of comparing notes on specifically how we're trying to incorporate age-friendly activities, engagement, and sort of action steps into our comprehensive planning, which was great, because as I was presenting, I went, you know, I think we could do more to incorporate it into our comprehensive planning, which I'll talk about more in the Comprehensive Plan Update. But, thank you, Dave, for your kind words. And then I'll just mention, our next meeting is April 27th. We'll be hearing from Primetime Director Alicia Williams about the Senior Survey, and also from the Director of Age Alive at MSU, Lisa Ritchie. Also, Age Alive is doing a forum on April 3 at MSU FCU on Farm Lane near Mount Hope, and I believe that's sold out, but there are still virtual spaces left. And I'll also be on a panel for that about housing options for older adults. I'll be joined with staff from the City of Lansing and also the, I think, Allen Neighborhood Center to talk about what's going on in the region, so looking forward to that. That's it, thank you.
Sounds great. It sounds like there's a lot going on for the age-friendly communities. Are any questions from the commissioners about this work? Okay, we'll move on to the Comprehensive Plan Updates. I'm not sure, Commissioner Denault, Commissioner Overby, Mr. Bartley, who would like to talk?
Let Landon take the lead.
Thank you. And so, yeah, Chair Sullivan and Commissioners Overby and Denault have been participating on the Comp Plan Update Coordinating Committee. This committee has been meeting about generally every month for the last several months, probably more than a year at this point. And the most recent meeting was actually on Monday, a couple days ago. The draft plan has been distributed to the committee. The Planning Commission will be seeing it shortly at the next meeting on April 9. So the committee did, I would say, a lot of really good work, a lot of really good discussion in this room, discussing the draft Comp Plan Update, really focused on the implementation steps and making sure that they sort of accurately reflected what we saw in committee discussion, but also in community engagement efforts. We're going to have a work session coming up next Friday, the 4th, at City Hall for the committee members, who can make it, just to do some sort of final massaging before we get it ready for primetime, which will be, I should say, for Planning Commission Discussion, which will be the following week, April 9, which you'll see that draft for the first time. At that meeting, I'll be asking you to sort of take the initial look, give any comments that you have, but essentially to begin the process for the public distribution, public review period. Your step will be to forward that document to the City Council for widespread distribution, which is the start of a six-week process, where we'd send out the draft for review by neighboring municipalities, utilities, railroads, et cetera, and also for wider public review. And then following that period, it would come back to you for a public hearing, at which point, we could certainly make more changes, but we'd also be looking for a recommendation for adoption at that time. I would expect that that will go to, be back to you in June, late June, and then likely to the City Council for their look in mid-July. So, I'm very excited about this update. I'm really pleased to see just the involvement of the committee and the quality of the work. I think we've done a good job, and I'm really excited to share it with you shortly. And Commissioners, I don't know if you had anything to add about our activity or discussion? Okay, thank you.
Excellent, great. Thank you very much, Mr. Bartley for the update. We'll move on to 2.3, the Green Code Study. Any Commissioners on that committee, would they like to tell us to give the update?
I'm going to defer to Landon once again.
Oh, okay.
I'm happy to. Our Green Code Study Committee met most recently a few weeks ago, and sort of gave direction to staff as far as some, I would say, some preliminary direction as far as what kind of recommendations to come up with. Staff from DPW has been working on that, Department of Public Works, but needed a little more time. So we had planned on meeting last week, or, excuse me, this week, and deferred that until April 8. So the committee will be meeting on April 8, which again will be just before your next meeting on April 9. And we expected that time to actually have some recommendations to vote on to pass along to City Council, as far as stormwater is concerned specifically. After the City Council process of determining which changes to move forward with for stormwater, then the committee will reconvene and start working on other sections of the code ordinances. So, looking forward to that process, too. And Commissioners, if there's anything you'd like to add, please feel free.
Or any questions from any Commissioners about that work? Thanks, Landon, for those updates. We'll move on to Topic 3, Staff Reports. Mr. Bartley, back to you.
Basically, I just would say, welcome Commissioner Sebeluski to your first meeting as Planning Commissioner. We're very glad to have you. And that, in fact, now we have no vacancies on the Planning Commission, so that's always great news. We're very, very excited about that. I just mentioned that as of tomorrow, I'll be heading out of the office. Luckily, I have a wonderful team that's going to take care of things, running while I'm gone. But I'll be out for a week at the National Planning Conference that's put on by the American Planning Association every year. This is in Denver. Very excited about this conference. Even more excited to say that next year, the National Conference will be in Detroit. So I'll be sharing more information about that, so that any Commissioners who are interested, we could potentially look at sending down a delegation to that conference. So I'll be reporting back after I return next Thursday. And I think that's all from me.
Is that why you have your sunglasses on, you're almost in vacation mode in here?
Right. Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, moving on to number four, our Commissioner announcements. Mr. Bartley stole my thunder a little bit here. I was going to announce Scott as our new Commissioner. Welcome to the Planning Commission. And would you mind telling us just briefly a little bit about yourself, how you're interested in the Planning Commission, and anything you'd like to share with us?
Yeah, I retired four years ago from Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan as Labor Relations Director. Prior to that, I worked at MSU in the same role, same title. In prior lives, I've worked with the City of Battle Creek and the Fort Custer Industrial Park, Battle Creek Unlimited Group, experience at Blue Cross Accident Fund, working with LEAP. I was the liaison for the downtown, or the countywide development organization. Hiked the Appalachian Trail for the first four years of retirement, and was looking for something to get involved in, and here I am.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any other Commissioner announcements? 4.1 is disclosures of conflicts of interest. Do any Commissioners have any conflicts of interest on any of the agenda topics for tonight? Okay, now we'll move on to communications from citizens. I did not see any written communications in our packets tonight. Is there, did I?
Yes, we received one just this evening, but might understand, and that was printed out by the writer, who's here tonight to give those, potentially give those comments as well during verbal communication, but that was received somewhat late, so I'm glad that they brought printouts, and those are on your desk.
Okay, great. Thank you. Then we'll move on to 5.2, verbal from the audience. This is the chance for audience members to come and talk to the Planning Commission. We have no public hearings tonight, so if there's, so this is the time for anyone to talk about anything, so we have no public hearings on any topics. Other than, we are introducing new business for the extension request for the Timber Sauna Company, so if you're talking, if you'd like to speak about that, you can feel free to wait till Topic 8.1. Otherwise, this is the time. I do have several cards here for people to speak. I guess I will just start by, you know, talking about these cards. So, we have two rules. One, fill out a card with your name and address, which I think most people have done. If you have not done so and would like to talk, please feel free to do that. And our second rule is a five-minute limit. So, Mr. Bartley will give you, I think, a thirty-second reminder when you're almost done, and then please finish up and limit your remarks to five minutes. So with that, I will start with my first cards here. I have a group of them from Meyer. So the first candidate is Matthew Levitt. Would you like to come up and address the committee?
Thank you. My name is Matt Levitt. I am a real estate manager for Meyer. I was here a couple of weeks ago when the project was first brought up for a fuel station at the corner of Lake Lansing and Abbott, that we are proposing on leased property in the City of East Lansing. So I wanted to just point out a couple of things. There was some feedback last, a couple of weeks ago regarding primarily the appearance of the building. We had some discussion about branding items, and, you know, the feedback was that it looked like it could be anywhere, but that's kind of the idea that Meyer has a brand identity that we work with throughout the state and throughout the Midwest. But, understanding that there were concerns about the color scheme and how it perhaps didn't fit necessarily within the intersection that was there and the other buildings and surrounding, and some of the mature trees that were around, we did incorporate into the gray color scheme, some softer tones, reds, browns, that hopefully will help assimilate the building more into its surroundings and make it feel part of the community versus, I think, maybe what was perceived as just sort of sticking out and not making that attempt. So, we did update the color scheme to the building, incorporating the different color brick. One of the comments from Mr. Bartley was helping to soften particularly the Abbott Road frontage of the building, because that will be visible for traffic, including windows. So we added three windows to the side. I will point out those are spandrel glass, just so that there's no confusion. You won't see directly into the building, because that is backroom area for the convenience store. But it does, it does give the external appearance of windows and softens the building, certainly. So we tried to make those efforts in the limited amount of turnaround time that we possibly had. So we are hoping that tonight, that we can go to a vote. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. I know it's part of your considerations, but again, we're here. I've got a couple of people with me that are certainly capable to speak on the design aspect and the civil design as well. So happy to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Jim Rosema. Please excuse me if I'm saying your name incorrectly.
Yes, it's Jim Rosema. Yes. No direct relation to the pitcher, former Tiger pitcher, but he is from GR, and as am I, so, thank you again. My name is Jim Rosema. I'm a senior project manager with Colliers Engineering and Design. You're representing Meyer for the new proposed fuel station. Just a few things I wanted to point out. In the revised plans that we submitted, we did address the landscaping concerns of the non-native species, or not invasive, but non-native. So those have been swapped out with a couple of varieties that I believe were favorable to the Planning Department. As Matt mentioned, we've made adjustments to the color scheme of the building. We did remove the relocation or proposed relocation of the bus shelter, as that was declined by CADA, and understand that we still need to get their final approval on the relocated sign, the actual position of that relative to the intersection. I've been working through Dustin over there at CADA and awaiting some formal notice to proceed or approval from this commission, so that we have some assurance that, you know, that correspondence is worthwhile and valuable of his time. Our plans do identify that the invasive species of the Japanese knot wood will be managed in accordance with the Eagle's requirements, which upon review of the information that has been shared with me, requires that that, our intention is to have somebody out there to identify it. It'll be hand-removed or excavated, allowed to dry, double-bagged, and then taken to a landfill for disposal or incinerated, as Eagle requires or requests. Several of the items, we've identified in our response that will comply with those during the building permit review process, as they're more engineering and technical-related as we proceed with the design. Question had come up about the mature trees, whether they can or cannot be saved. The excavation on the site and the construction of the curbs and the storm sewer systems and the other utilities will require the removal of everything within the lease area. There are, there is a vacant parcel to the north, Lot 14, that's shown on the survey. There are several mature trees on that. We will, we have no intention of disturbing those. So, there are a couple along the very north edge that are maybe straddling the property line. We'll evaluate the potential to salvage those, but I do think the excavation of curbs and gutters and installation of storm sewer is going to get into that root system. So, you know, we've identified them as having, needing to be removed. One of the comments that was provided to us was to provide a tree survey, and on the survey that was submitted, all of the trees are identified. And on the survey that was submitted, all of the trees are identified of, of any size, I guess. There's a lot, there was a lot of brush on site, which has been cleared so that we could go out and do some soil borings. But the larger trees have all remained. We will proceed as, as needed to gain a permit to remove any further trees prior to construction. As noted, the, there is overnight service. This is a 24 hour facility. The original drawings did not show that service window. That has been added to the architectural renderings and elevations. It's just to the right of the main entrance of the building. And getting into the engineering review comments, the majority of the, the comments for, on the cover sheet have been addressed on the revised plans. The sidewalk, I did talk with Stephen Clayton about the, the need to jog that sidewalk and that is simply for us to be able to plant the eight foot wide landscape buffer before the concrete fuel tank cap. Right away, no problems with dedicating that. We will abandon the well and all the rest of the comments will have been dealt with. The no left turn sign has been revised. I talked with Stephen about that as well. The revised plan shows revised signage and a one-way entry off of Lake Lansing into the, into the site. So if there are any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Great. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it. Next is Tom Peter, architect? Reader, sorry. I'm, I'll put my. Put my glasses back on? So, okay.
It's a fine Polish name. What's, Tom Reader, architect with CED, here representing Meyer. Matt basically already laid it all out. We, we took the comments from the last meeting, changed the color scheme, added some windows around Wood Street and just tried to soften it up, change the color. Typically a Meyer prototype is a precast building. This one is all brick all the way around. So it's a, it's a hundred percent brick building. I do have a brand I have to maintain. That's kind of the rub. I, I mean, the, there is, Meyer has a prototype. I depart, can depart a little bit from that to achieve various things, but I can't change the footprint of the building. I mean, every, around the, you know, the, on the inside, I've got either storage, coolers or restrooms. So adding real windows, I just, there's this, it can't be done. And I can't rearrange the inside of the store. It needs, it needs to function the way it needs to function. So, but anyway, did the best I could. Hope you like it. Hoping for a positive outcome tonight. So if you have any questions, I'm here for you. So, okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
So just to clarify, when we have discussed this issue, we'll be able to pull folks from the Meyer's team up to field our questions? Yeah, I'd like to do that.
But not now.
Okay.
Okay. So let's see, the next name I can mispronounce, Janice Maxson.
Jessica?
Jessica.
All right. So for the sake of time, I'm just gonna get to it and read directly. I've provided you with some comments. Yeah. So I've reviewed the changes that Matt Levitt and the Meyer team are proposing as improvements since the last public hearing, and they appear to be bare minimum and still do not reflect the effort to meet the requirements to be reasonably compatible with the existing buildings adjacent of the properties. If this proposal is to move forward, I would strongly encourage the Planning Commission to uphold the requirements outlined in the zoning code and not accept this current revised proposal. Meyer has demonstrated that they are very capable of being innovative in stepping outside of their traditional branding. They were very successful at the Meyer City Market in downtown Lansing. This location reflects compatible brick to surrounding properties, uses large white block lettering and really makes a statement in downtown Lansing. Meyer clearly can do better and it's the responsibility to all of you to uphold that standard. My husband spoke about a barrier at the public hearing two weeks ago between our properties, and I did not see anything mentioned or revised about that. I have several other concerns as I've reviewed the documents online and watched the video from the previous public hearing. I was present, however, I felt that it was important to listen, to gather information and to take some time to research the zoning codes. The responsibility of the Planning Commission and our rights as the most directly impacted property to the proposal. I have concern that the proposal for a special use permit does not meet zoning codes that state that the proposal shall safely accommodate the expected traffic congestion or delays that will result coming from our service drive and by moving the bus stop down further towards our drive, which we share with the apartment complexes. What is also not being considered in addition is the opposing gas station. That has congested access points to that flow directly onto Lake Lansing, very close to the intersection. It's challenging enough on this small stretch near the intersection with the existing access points to businesses. Adding a right-hand turn only access point onto Lake Lansing is asking too much from that space. It is stated, it was stated in the last meeting, oh, there is a Speedway across the street? I did not know that. That's alarming to me. I encourage you to take a step back and experience it firsthand for yourselves. If you're not a frequent driver using that intersection at Abbott and Lake Lansing and the current business accesses, that you should certainly experience the flow in that area before considering this proposal. Having owned our building since 2017, it's only become more and more congested and unsafe. It is the responsibility of all of you to not approve unsafe traffic congestion. I have a concern that the proposed service station does not meet zoning requirements that state the proposed use shall not adversely affect the use and enjoyment of adjacent properties by generating excessive noise, vibrating, light, glare, odors and other form of pollution and nuisances. You are clearing a wooded undeveloped lot where there is no noise and asking to build a 12 pump gas station and introduce hundreds of vehicles in and out. There will be excessive noise right outside our patient rooms with the projected traffic. This property is not zoned for a service station. The future land uses intent is to provide for low profile suburban style offices and retail uses. A service station is anything but low profile. The developer that purchased this property knew that and what it was exactly zoned for and intended for. It should remain as is because one gas station on this intersection is enough. It's the responsibility of all of you to not approve a service station for land that was intended to provide a low profile suburban style office in retail use. I have a concern that the proposed will diminish the economic value of our property if a service station is approved. We purchased our building with the knowledge that the zoning around us would stay low profile suburban style and retail use. We called our financial advisor of 20 years from Raven. Okay, just finished. Can I have permission?
That's your time.
What's that?
That's your, your five minutes are up.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. So I, I have a card from Daniel Downs, but I think. Later, okay. And then the, my final card I have here is from Patrick Rose.
Thank you, Patrick Rose, 310 Oxford Road. I'm here today on a new issue, something we did not talk about at the last meeting. Our group has met to take into account concerns we've received at the doors during a 16 month campaign where we learned about family situations that are made illegal in the city of East Lansing. This would include a range of relationships that the city is required by the state and federal constitution to allow. We've drafted an ordinance and we've asked that you put it on your agenda so that the public can have a forum to discuss it. We have a deep bench of legal talent, former circuit judge, magistrate judge of over 40 years with the state, people who've done municipal law, including myself, for decades, people who've worked in this area and other cities, people who've worked in other cities nationally on this issue, including myself. We would like you to address it because that's the role of a commission. We've got an ordinance to look at. We want to have an agenda item put on the agenda. There's a precedent for this in the Planning Commission going back. The Police Oversight Commission put on the traffic stop search ordinance, debated it, gave a forum, took national and statewide input, initiated on their own, got it to council and it was adopted by a four to one vote. I was told the Planning Commission can't do that, doesn't do that, listens to a city council member who tells them that's not their role. If you accept the shrinking of your role, you're changing the function of a commission. I'm also here because last week you got bad advice on two points. Mr. Chubb said we fully follow the state constitution with our ordinance on what is a family and what is a domestic unit because we are an ordinance of inclusion, not exclusion. That's not a fair reading of the ordinances Mr. Grebner described to you. It is impossible to read the Delta Township ordinance, compare it to the East Lansing ordinance and find any meaningful difference. They are both ordinances of exclusion. They do precisely what the state Supreme Court said you cannot do and what the US Supreme Court said you cannot do, which is you cannot put a list of blood relatives and make it less than the, the range. So a grandma was required to be allowed. East Cleveland didn't. They struck down that ordinance. Great grandmas are required to be allowed. East Lansing doesn't allow it. Your ordinance would be struck down if challenged. So the city attorney told you something no reasonable attorney could tell you. The second thing he said was that any constitutional defect is remedied by the domestic unit definition. And I'm going to tell you what he said exactly. Under domestic unit, I'm quoting Mr. Chubb, "Any group can come to the city and explain why they are a domestic unit and meet the basic tenants of a family by meeting the financial responsibilities of a family and meet the other requirements." It's extremely inclusive and that's why the East Lansing definition has not been challenged. First, it has been challenged. He was wrong. He didn't even do his homework. I've challenged it in court. I'm aware of many other attorneys who've challenged it. So he misled you, but he prefaced it with, "To the best of my knowledge," the old Watergate thing with the testimony. That's not the role of a city attorney. If he doesn't know, he shouldn't give you an opinion. Secondly, it wasn't drafted 18 years ago. There's a 2001 Court of Appeals decision describing its adoption in the 90s. If he'd taken five minutes on Google, he wouldn't have misled you that it's 18 years old. But every statement he made about the domestic unit provision and its breadth is false. One, the city provides no procedure to qualify for a domestic unit. It has no application to allow alternative families. It won't give you an opportunity to submit affidavits. It won't give you a hearing. Two, you don't even have a right to a determination. The city does not assure its citizens a decision if they qualify. It reserves the right to fine you, make you hire a lawyer, make you face thousands of dollars of fines. That's your due process to protect a constitutional right. The courts have said that violates the right, that doesn't protect it. Three, the standard of proof is too high, clear and convincing. You don't have to show clear and convincing to show you're a civil union if you're two gay men or two gay women. It's a preponderance. That standard itself violates the constitution. Fourth, the actual substantive requirements are very strict. Children don't qualify because they don't meet most of the material needs of the family. And last, there are four wiggle words that exclude every alternative family that are not necessary and that are unconstitutional. A combine, combination of people, an association, a group and a coterie, all excluded. So if you can get a hearing, you are excluded. We ask you to put us on the agenda to have our ordinance considered and we ask you to do that because it's the highest function of the Planning Commission and appreciate you listening.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any comments from the commission or shall we move on?
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Someone on the, on the phone. Please.
Caller with the phone number ending in five, five, two, you can now address the commission.
Good evening. My name is Kath Edsel, 1026 Daisy Lane, and I wanted to address similar issues that Mr. Rose was just talking about. I don't want to rehash in detail comments previously made by Liz Harrow, Mark Grebner and Patrick Rose, but I concur with the comments that they've made previously and the comments Mr. Rose just made. I do need to make a few other comments. First of all, Prop one is very clear in that it does not apply to the rental code and zoning, zoning rules. So changing the definition of family and the zoning rules is irrelevant and has no relation to Prop one. Prop one is passed and the city needs to enact what was approved by the voters in this community. As a separate issue, the city needs to comply, as Mr. Rose was just saying, with the, with the Michigan constitution and Supreme Court ruling that says our zoning rules cannot determine who makes up a family. I've previously shared numerous examples of how my wife and I have brought children into our home in ways that did not meet the definition of family. That, that information may have led to the decision to add foster children and legal guardianships, and yet I can name two other situations in my family alone whereby we cared for children who would not have met the, your current updated definition of family. On more than one occasion, teenagers who were struggling in their family of origins lived with us for extended periods of time without any legal guardianship or foster care. They stayed, we fed them, clothed them, sheltered them, and when they were ready to move on to the next stage of their lives, they did so. We also cared for children from West Africa who came here for medical care. We did not have legal guardianship, only medical power of attorney. Again, they stayed for extended periods of time. They were part of our family. We fed, clothed, sheltered and took, took them to address their medical needs and then they returned to Africa. All of these children benefited from living in our home. They were part of our family and yet, as I learned recently, they did so in violation of city code. And on March 12th, city attorney, uh, city attorney Chubb said the ordinance 1545 definition expands the definition of family and is not exclusionary. And yet I just listed six people who would, who we consider part of our family that even the most recent definition excludes. As Liz Harrow said in February, "The minute you make a list, someone is excluded." I strongly suggest you take the suggestions Mr. Rose just gave you, look at other college towns who have done this well, many have, as many have suggested, and stop limiting who constitutes a family. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Are there any other?
No, no other callers in the queue.
Great. Thank you. Let's move on to topic number six and then seven. Six is public hearings. We have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to topic seven, unfinished business. Mr. Bartley, seven point one, please. Oh, let me, let me introduce it. Sorry. A request from Hassan Badun of Decor Inc. on behalf of Pizza Wala's for approval of a special use permit located at 523 East Grand River Avenue. The applicant request is to allow alcohol service. The property is zone B3, city center commercial. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll defer to Grace Whitney on this one.
Oh, sorry.
I'm Grace Whitney, Associate Planner, and I've been working with the applicant on this. So this is a request to allow for onsite alcohol service at the Pizza Wala Restaurant. It's proposed at 523 East Grand River, which is in the previous MSU FCU space that was vacated. Let's see, I believe that was in 2023. So it's been vacant since then. It's located right next to the peanut barrel. They're proposing a total occupancy of 260 people with 128 seats. They also are proposing a seasonal patio with 32 seats shown on their plan. And that patio is located on private property, not within the city right of way, similar to how the peanut barrels is set up. Right now they have permit applications in for construction for the restaurant, which they would be allowed to operate without the alcohol service if they complete work prior to this process being completed. They're in the review. in the review process. They got back some comments from the fire department about exit illumination, and that was the only things that they really needed to revise, so they're currently working on that. The only, there aren't really any changes since the previous meeting. I did adjust the motion that's in your packet to include some of the previous discussion points, including the limitation to the patio hours, to that being closed at 11:00 PM to mirror the Peanut Barrel next door, and then additional conditions on the special use permit that are similar to the Peanut Barrel and other alcohol-serving establishments in town. The request appears to meet all of the conditions for special use approval. The only condition in there that is highlighted, just for your discussion, is regarding the requirement for the establishment not to cause or continue an undue concentration of similar uses in the neighborhood such that liquor establishments in trade become a dominant influence or feature of the district or neighborhood. I just wanted to highlight that because the previous tenant was a banking institution. At one point, there was a restaurant in this space when the building was expanded in the eighties, but it hasn't been that in quite some time. However, the only other restaurant located in the 400, 500, and 600 blocks of Grand River, which is between Charles Street and Collingwood, the only restaurant with an active license for onsite alcohol service is the Peanut Barrel, so that's just something to consider. So I'm here if you have any questions. I don't think the applicant is here. They did say they were going to be coming, but they are coming from quite far away, so I'm not sure if something happened, but I hopefully can answer any questions if there are any.
I just have a quick question.
Yeah.
And I might have missed this. Did that liquor license come from somewhere else, from another establishment that gave it up, or is this a brand-new one?
I am not sure what the, they are still going through the liquor license process with the state. They can't get that until this approval is granted, so they won't actually have the liquor license in hand until the local entity signs off on it, which requires this process to be completed.
Any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner Donald?
Yeah. I know a couple of weeks ago, when we had a proposal in from the folks at Field House and the new pizza place, what's it called, side piece behind Field House, city police had expressed some concerns about noise and general congestion in that area. Has city staff consulted with them at all on this, or have they given any comment?
Yeah, yep. We route it to the police whenever we get an application like this, and they let me know that they did not have any concerns with this restaurant. My guess would be because it's more oriented as like a sit-down, family-style restaurant with the alcohol service as like an ancillary to that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other commissioner questions?
Yeah, a couple of things. So the elevations here that you presented in the packet are really very appealing, and can one assume if we approve this tonight that they'll be, maybe walk through the effort with me and the commission about how the final plan connects to the pictures that we see here, to put it very bluntly. The process is, can we be assured, I mean, I like this plan. I think it's, I think it will be an asset to Grand River and to that area, but I just want to make sure that we build it the way I'm seeing it tonight. Can I be assured of that?
Yeah, so your approval, it's in the motion that it should be built according to the testimony and plans provided, so to a reasonable degree, yes.
But if I can, if I can add to that.
Please.
The finishes may not be exactly as you see on the rendering, but the floor plan, the building elevations, the patio plan, et cetera, would be as approved because it's per application and testimony. But as far as the renderings, they're conceptual. It may not be exact.
So I thought the same thing. Can I just add something really quickly to that?
Sure.
So I saw the renderings, which looked really nice, but I was concerned because there was no barrier around the patio.
Yeah, that's my second question.
In the render, yeah, right there. So, yeah, go ahead.
Lauren, well, Lauren brought that up. I just wanted to reiterate what Lauren brought up last week. I think that was a real valid point. So you were on the same page. You go ahead.
Well, I was just, I was just going to ask Grace, do we need to add that as a condition, or is that something that the special use permission demands?
So that, I believe, is shown on their patio floor plan layout, and additionally, that would be required by the Liquor Control Commission. They can't have outdoor seating with alcohol service unless there is a hard barrier.
Okay. So it's almost like the drawing, but not quite.
Yeah.
Wait, any other, any other commissioner questions? I just have, I do have one for you, Grace. Condition, so I wasn't here last time, but I did watch the video, which was super helpful. But I did have some questions about condition five, about the capacity of the restaurant. So the numbers are really varied, right? Shall not exceed 260 people or persons, seating for no less than 128 diners. I don't quite understand, like, I don't quite understand, stand others. I mean, I understand, like, accommodating for staff, but I don't think we have 128 staff in the room. Like, what's the difference?
Yeah, so the, their current seating plan that they showed as an example has 128 seats on it. Recently, city council has had a lot of questions about the number of seats, and they've really wanted people to firm that up on their plans so that they have a better idea of what the seating capacity is versus the actual total capacity of the building. So if you, you know, moved seats around, you could, per building and fire code, that building can accommodate up to 260 people, but they've asked for more clarity from people recently about how many seats are going to be provided, and so based on the seating plan that was provided, that's the minimum seating amount, if that makes sense.
Okay, so they can have 128 seats.
At a minimum.
At a minimum, at a minimum, okay.
Yes.
I'm just trying to think. I used to bank there. I can't imagine 260 people in that, you know, in that space. It just seems really like a, I'm very crowded.
Yeah, yeah, and that's per the building and fire code that that calculation is done through. So if there was any issues or if something in the building would further limit that during their review, which they're going through right now for the restaurant itself, the fire marshal would say, "You need to further limit this," but I haven't received anything of that nature from him.
And that 128, does that include the patio, the thirty-some odd people in the patio?
No, that just includes their indoor seating plan. So typically, if you're adding seasonal seating outside, you can't increase the total occupancy of your building. That has to be a part of your occupant load, but that 128 is only the indoor seats.
So it's indoor seating, but there could be people around the bar or staff. Okay, got it. Great. Thank you. Any other questions?
I actually was going to bring up the barriers on, around the patio seating, too. And I guess my question, I'm glad, and thank you for answering, that yes, there will be barriers, but I'm wondering, have Kimchi Box to the right and Peanut Barrel to the left been consulted at all about the, a new restaurant moving in? I think I'm mostly asking because we've all been to Peanut Barrel at a busy time, and the entrance into their patio is pretty small and congested as it is. And so I'm wondering, do you, does staff or do anyone at Pizza Wala foresee any sort of issues with that area getting congested as people are waiting for tables or, right, especially for outdoor seating? And then second question, related question, do we have any idea how disagreements between tenants of the same building might get resolved if we see something like that?
So Landon's pulling up a picture right now. I actually went out and took another picture because Lauren asked a similar question, Commissioner Lapine, at the last meeting, about the proximity to the neighboring patio. So there is a decent amount of space between where that current patio is at the Peanut Barrel and the proposed new patio. In terms of the existing tenants there, they would have all gotten notices. We send out notices to anyone within 300 feet, and I haven't gotten any comments from them. We do have, they are presenting their project to the DDA tomorrow, so I don't know if anyone is planning to come to that with feedback, but I haven't received anything from any of the businesses so far. So as far as that, I don't, I haven't gotten anything. And then, in terms of disputes between tenants, that would be a civil thing that we wouldn't get involved with unless there is a ordinance violation that's going on or some kind of violation of their approved plans. That we, that's when we would get involved, but otherwise, that's a civil thing between the two of them, so.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Landon, could you go back to the other picture for one second? That one, the yellow circle in the middle. Was that indicating where the patio would be? So it sort of could be between those two trees with the...
That was, the circle is just what suite it is within the whole building.
Oh, okay. That's not where the patio would be.
Yeah, no, that's not necessarily the exact location of the patio. That's on their plan. It's pretty close. Yeah, it's pretty centered with the front of the building.
Okay.
I have, excuse me, I have a follow-up question for you. You said there was some amount of space between the two patios. So how much space is that, and what will be in that space?
That I don't know the exact measurement of how big that is, of how far that distance is going to be, but the, and in between there is the, is private space that's owned by that building, that property.
So it's just, yes.
So it's not, yeah, it's not a public sidewalk, but right now, there's just the brick there. It's a public walkway. I don't think it would be preventative for anybody, you know, walking through there, but I don't know that it's, anything particular is going to be done with it.
Right. Thank you.
I'm going to bother you with one more question.
No, you're good.
I'm really glad that you pointed out the photos that you took and added to the packet because of Commissioner Lapine's questions. I noticed that there's a bike rack where the intended patio is. I'm guessing that's on the property, though, that's considered privately owned, and that, so that's not like a city bike rack. Do you know if there's any intention to replace that? I can tell you, I have hooked up my bike to that bike rack a number of times to visit the old Peanut Barrel, so.
I have not heard anything from the applicant about that, but if that's something that you would like to require them to do, that is definitely something that you can add, and I don't think that they would have issues with that. They're not here, but I've spoken to them about the different conditions and things that were requested and discussed last time, and they were very open and amenable to trying to make it the best, you know, project that they could. So I think that they would probably be amenable to that, if that's something you want to consider requiring.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Well, that's Chelsea. Were you going to make a motion down there? No? We need Cynthia. That's all we need.
That's right. You do.
Or Chuck, did you want to make a motion?
I'm going to do it if you want.
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, I'm going to read the motion from the, from the staff report. "I move to recommend approval by city council of a request from Hassan Badun of Decor Incorporated for alteration of the interior space for a new restaurant, Pizza Wallace, with alcohol service in the existing building and a modified patio. This approval includes alcohol service and a patron capacity not to exceed 260 persons for the following reasons. The proposed development does meet all applicable ordinance requirements. The proposal does meet the standards of review identified in sections 50-38 of the Code of Ordinances. The proposal use, the proposed use of the property is compatible with surrounding land uses and not adversely impact the use and enjoyment of adjacent properties." Just a second, I'll get to the conditions. "The following conditions of approval shall apply. Approval is in accordance with the plans approved by the applicant and per testimony subsequent to revisions as required. Two, all required permits shall be obtained from the Department of Planning, Building, and Development for all interior renovations as well as for exterior signs in accordance with Chapter 32, Signs of the City Code. Three, the project shall be designed and developed in accordance with all applicable state and local statute codes and regulations. This approval shall take effect upon the filing of and executed memorandum of special use permit with the Ingham County Register of Deeds per section 50-96 of the City Code. Five, the capacity of the restaurant shall not exceed 260 persons. Seating for no less than 128 diners shall be provided. The seating plan shall be reviewed and approved by the building department and fire marshal in accordance with building and code, building and fire code requirements. Six, seasonal seating for up to 32 persons shall be provided in the outdoor service area, area, but such..."
I think we should correct that. I think it may be provided versus shall be provided. At least that's the way it reads, and that's the way...
Okay.
Less, I just, I think that's a key word in my mind.
So additional seating may be, may be provided for up to 32 persons? Is that what you're...
That's what I, well, I think that's the way it reads, and I like the way it reads because that gives them an option to not do it if they deem it is inappropriate. "Shall" says they must do it by language from the commission. I like "may" better, my input. Go ahead, Chelsea.
I think we, I think the best, and I'll maybe defer to the chair, vice chair here, and Landon to guide us, but I think the best way of action forward is to continue on with the language as is, and you can propose an amendment to change the conditions, if that would be amenable.
I think, I think that's right. I think Chuck didn't quite read it as it was written. He said "shall" instead of "may." I think that's what Dave was talking about.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
I think...
Exactly that.
Okay, well, I, it says "may" right there, so.
Yeah, well, just a misread, that's all.
Okay, number six, "Seasonal seating for up to 32 persons may be provided in the outdoor service area, but such seating shall not increase the overall capacity of the facility as stated in condition five above. Seven, "The hours of operation shall be limited to between the hours of 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM, Monday through Sunday. Eight, persons under 21 years of age shall not be permitted to enter the premises after 11:00 PM unless accompanied by a parent or legal guardian. Nine, "The outdoor service area shall be vacated by 11:00 PM daily. Ten, furniture and equipment used in conjunction with the outdoor service area shall be stored in an inconspicuous space seasonally when the area is not in use."
Second.
Okay, so a motion was placed by Commissioner Overby and seconded by Commissioner Chapin. Do we have any discussion about the motion? Are we, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay, so all, all of those in favor of approving the motion as set up by Commissioner Overby, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Great.
No, no, okay. Thank you for your...
Okay.
I don't...
Yes.
If I may.
Yes.
Just to the question about the parliamentary procedure there, Commissioner Chapin, that would have been a point of order, in which case you recognized essentially an error being made in the, in the description. In that case, you would just call it a point of order and wait to be recognized by the chair. But it sounded like it was just pointing out that you believed that Commissioner Overby had misspoken. So Commissioner Donald was correct that essentially the, you called it out, the proper procedure would have been to have Commissioner Overby finish his motion and then make an amendment. I think it was just fine how you brought it up, though, for what it's worth.
May I request that we have a roll call vote when we, when we vote on something like this in the future tonight?
Sure.
Thank you.
During the discussion, I think we can, we can do that.
Yeah, you can always request a roll call vote.
When we vote on it, we have a roll call vote.
Right. But I think after the motion is presented and then seconded, and then we have discussion, at the end of that discussion, you can say, can we, can we have a roll call vote?
Yes. Okay.
Okay, let's move on. Okay, uh, let's move on to 7.2 of unfinished business. Approve a request from Matt Levitt on behalf of Meyer Inc. for approval of a special use permit located at 100 West Lake Lansing Road. The applicant request is to construct a 5,751 square foot gas station with six gas pump islands and 12 pumps. The property is zoned B2 Retail Sales Business District. Uh, Mr. Bartley, or, I'm sorry, Ms. Wright.
Alicia Wright in Planning Department. The Meyer gas station proposal had their public hearing on March 12th. There were some concerns related to the overall appearance, buffering, trash, and traffic impact. The applicant did address some of the concerns, but not all of them, and then the commissioners also had concerns. I'll go through briefly to try and address what was, um, listed. So the property is in the B2 district as indicated, which does provide for auto service centers as a special use approval. I think the contradiction is that the future land use category does not include that in the, from the 2018 Conference of Plan, but it is zoned for a special use in the neighborhood. The applicant site work, um, there are concerns relating to the city's tree specialist, which indicated the preservation of large mature trees is encouraged, um, new trees will be far behind in regards to the ecological benefits. There are some elms along the edge of the property that would be nice to preserve. Um, from the building perspective, I know that one of the members spoke about red being added by, I only noticed a tan color being added, there's still no definition between the walls, um, you know, adding some paint color to a brick building doesn't necessarily bring it into compliance with what the ordinance specifically says for architectural character and being reasonably compatible. They've added windows, um, and I know their concern is their branding, but they can still convey who they are as indicated in other locations. As an example, there could be box, uh, instead of just a box with four corners, there could be slight offsets to help try and better complement the neighborhood. They did add the walk window, which they indicated. There will be right turn lanes. It was indicated by the applicant just during testimony that they have no issues with the dedication of the right of way, and they wanted to talk to the engineering department, concerns about straightening out that sidewalk. There, it's my understanding that the purpose of the way that it is is because they need the required buffering of an eight-foot island to put in trees. But my communications with Stephen in engineering is that it should be straightened out, so I know they have a box, I know they have a plan, I know they have their standard, there can potentially, I'm not a, I'm not an engineer or an architect, but one might infer that there may be an opportunity to reduce some items, but again, I'm not the designer. But that was one particular element. So I, I did list some of the concerns, the additional effort for more compatible design, easement recordings, um, policies, and I do know that the tree survey is, is listed, but the cliffs, cliff from, um, DPW had indicated that that would have to be added as well. So there are some suggested conditions for approval, should you decide that you wish to act on that this evening. I can take questions.
Do any commissioners have questions for Ms. Wright?
I'd just like to point out that the packet of information is 184 pages long, so we read most if not all of it, and we appreciate the thoroughness in which you put this together, Alicia. I was thinking I would make a hard copy of that section. I chose not to.
The dissertation's over here.
I pulled a few pieces out.
How many trees did you...
Pieces out, but there's a lot of information in there, and, um, I just wanted to thank you for compiling that as well as you had, did. I have questions, I think others do as well, so, um, I'll defer to you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Chaiten.
Okay, did you wanna...
You go first.
Okay. All right, so, um, I wouldn't mind if, you know, I, I'm kinda speaking with the three gentlemen back there, appreciate you being with us tonight, um, and be, be ready to, I'm gonna ask a couple of questions. I actually have two questions that concern me, and I wanna tell you, I'm a little conflicted coming into the meeting tonight. Um, I'm kind of looking for, not kind of, I am looking forward to the conversation, dialogue with, uh, with the Meyer Gillespie Collier Group, uh, in hopes that we can kinda learn a little bit more about this, uh, proposal. So I'm, I'm conflicted, I'm open-minded, and I wanna be very clear about that to the commissioners and to our staff right now. So, I think, um, hey, there's a lot of detail here. Uh, I especially liked, Mr. Rosema, your, uh, your letter written on March 18th, copied it, there's a lot of will comply, I think there's still a couple of points that we need to address, but I appreciated your point-by-point, uh, responses to the questions posed by the engineering department and by the commission here. I was looking, uh, for something, there was a comment by Dr. Maxim at the, Maxim, Ma, am I saying that correctly, Maxim? Maxim, uh, at the end, I'm sorry, you're right there. At the end, and I, I think we raised that question again, I believe there's some other questions about that. I didn't see in the information, um, anything about a buffer, something aesthetically pleasing that would, uh, buffer the proposed station from, uh, the dental practice on the west and the apartment complex back on the north side, uh, behind the building. Maybe I missed it, I looked for it, but I didn't really see that specifically addressed, so that would be question one. The bigger question I have, though, is, you know, I'm, I'm more of a macro guy than I am a micro guy, and here's my question for you. So, down the road, let's say this takes off, Meyer builds a station there, um, I'm in the grocery store, my fellow commissioners are in the grocery store, they're not really gonna look at the traffic, um, uh, information, I'm not gonna look necessarily what the engineering department is going to say, but they're gonna say, Dave, now, were you on the, uh, the planning commission when the Meyer station was, uh, first brought forward? And I'm gonna say I was. And the question people are going to ask is, why would Meyer position a new gas station on that corner? It's a small lot, there's a very popular Speedway gas station right across the street, uh, as you know, there's a new build, uh, two blocks to the south towards campus, a Marathon station that's under construction right now, and not long ago, a big new Costco gas station, uh, about a mile or so to the west. So I'm wanting you to take me back into the conference room, the boardroom, wherever it was, and what the point, counterpoint was regarding the specific location for a Meyer gas station. I'm puzzled by that. I'd like to know what that conversation looked like, and what, what led you to, you've invested a lot of money and detail and time and energy, so before you make a decision like that, to invest like that, there must have been some pretty good, robust, thoughtful conversation with smart people to lead us to you, this position. I'm puzzled how you got to this. Could you, could you, that's a broad question. I don't see anybody jumping up to answer it.
Commissioner Chaiten, one second, can, can we have them come up to the podium and answer questions now during our question time?
Yes.
Okay, so does someone from Meyer wanna come up and, um, answer that question? I think other commissioners will have questions as well.
Certainly. Um, that is a broad question. Uh, certainly, sorry, my name is Matt Levitt, real estate manager for Meyer. Let's talk about the buffering first. We are more than happy to comply with, um, what the commission, uh, or frankly, we should have a discussion with our neighbors, our potential neighbors, um, on what that looks like, whether it's fencing, uh, I believe a couple of weeks ago we mentioned a berm, there isn't enough width, um, in the, the separation for a natural land berm, um, but i-if, if the desire is, is to see a six-foot slap fence, something like that, that, that both collects trash to be picked up, uh, on a daily frequency, as well as, um, preventing, you know, lights from vehicles shining into the neighbor's property, we are certainly more than happy to comply with that. Um, it, it isn't on the plans, I apologize for that, it should have been something that I, um, saw, we were far more concerned with the building appearance, and, um, that seemed to be the primary, uh, thrust of the conversation a couple of weeks ago, so that, that is what we addressed, but I, I don't wanna, to make it seem like we intentionally neglected, um, the buffering, so we're, we're happy to have that conversation and include something, um, that will help the buffering situation, particularly on the west, um, where the office is. To the north, there is gonna be that section of vacant land, um, with trees that remain, so maybe that, maybe that's addressed in the future, I'm, I'm thinking there won't be as, as much, um, visibility coming through, but, but if that is something that the commission wants to see, we're certainly open to that conversation as well. Okay, the location. Um, so Meyer is, uh, embarking on, i-if, if you're aware of sort of the fuel station, uh, there's a bit of an arms race taking place. Sheets is coming into town, um, Come and Go recently expanded to Grand Rapids, uh, Maverick, who purchased Come and Go, has continued to, um, seek sites that, uh, throughout the state that, that they're trying to establish gas stations. Meyer sees the gas station business as part of our core business. We have supercenters, we have grocery stores, and we have the, the markets that have come forward, so part of our strategy is to increase our visibility, uh, in the Fuel Express Station, uh, segment. So previously, we had only attached them to existing stores, but recently we've come more into the concept of a standalone fuel station, um, as a satellite to some of the supercenters where we don't have them, or, uh, as a standalone concept, there are a couple that we're working on in Grand Rapids as well, um, to test the concept. I wouldn't say that we know, so we have always, and, and I think we had this discussion a couple of weeks ago, that we have always had a desire to put a fuel station at the store on Lake Lansing Road at 127. However, uh, the powers that be, uh, with the township that, that govern the zoning of that store have continually said that we are not capable of doing, we're, we're not able to do that. Um, it's part of the zoning code, and there are, despite several entreaties to the township, um, to potentially build a gas station there, we were turned down, so...
Can I ask a quick follow-up to that?
Sure.
So was that recent, I mean, was, was it as you were thinking of this plan, or was it right before you thought of this plan, you got turned down by the, by the Lansing Township to put one in, the Meyer parking lot's huge, right, it's a great place for, for these, like they do in Bath or whatever. Um, so how long ago was, did you ask Lansing Township, and was it when the store was originally built, or was it like two years ago and then you came here?
It was a few years ago, was the, was the last time they went, we went. Um, I've been with the company about nine years now, it was the second time in my tenure that we had approached, um, looking for feedback on the potential for a gas station, um, and it was, it was sort of in no uncertain terms, um, that we were not going to proceed, uh, down that road.
Yes.
I'm so sorry, can you clarify, uh, the store on Lake Lansing Road is within the city, but were you looking on the west side of 127 in Lansing Township?
No, so we, we had been looking, it was my understanding that, that there were conversations above me with, um, whoever would have been responsible for approving a fuel station, and the conversation was, it's not happening. We never made, um, any actual application because the idea was met with, with a no, effectively.
So, just to confirm, the Lansing, the Lake Lansing Meyer is in East Lansing, right?
The store is within, is in the city of East Lansing, but, but across the highway, across the west side of 127 is within Lansing Township, so that's where I was confused that maybe the...
Okay, I, I misspoke, I, the conversations that I was not necessarily, I wasn't a part of, um, from Meyer to the city, um, or that it was not something that was interested at the time.
Okay.
And, and it was a few years ago. Um, so we have had conversations with Gillespie Group, um, we did the, the Lansing Market, um, downtown Lansing with them, they are our landlord there, um, and there were continued conversations over other additional projects that we could work together on in Lansing, and this site came up. It's, it was, um, that they had control of this parcel on the northwest corner, um, they knew that we had been looking for fuel station projects, and that was a, a discussion point, uh, and so they approached us and said, is this something that you're interested in? And, um, knowing the history of the desire to have a fuel station at the store on Lake Lansing, uh, this was, uh, certainly a, a, a good fit from a proximity perspective, it's about a half a mile away from the store, um, operations could be optimized by having, um, some oversight from the main store, similar to if it were on, um, the outlot, and so we decided that this is something that we would like to pursue. Um, every project that we do includes analytics and discussion amongst, uh, both the real estate team and operations, is this, uh, a site that is of interest? We drive the site, we have, uh, visits from leadership in the area, and they all agree that this is certainly some, a project that we would have interested in, would, would have interest in and which we should pursue. So, um, yes, the Speedway across the street does well. Part of that is, it, it's a high, you know, it's a, a busy intersection for both east-west traffic and north-south going to campus and north. That's all a draw for a fuel station, as you would imagine, we, we wanna see that transient traffic, um, in both directions, being on a hard corner is, um, preferable to being mid-block, because then you capture traffic from two main roads instead of one. Uh, so, you know, it kinda ticks all of the boxes that are positive for a, a fuel station and C-store. From our perspective, it, it made a lot of sense, both the analytics and the, the gut feeling of being on the ground said, this is a good fit for Meyer.
Could you just address the key analytics? I wanted to use that word, and I forgot to use it. What were the analytics in front of you? That, I'm pretending I'm in the conference room and I'm not necessarily a yea vote, and I wanna be convinced that this is a good investment. I don't know what it costs to build a gas station, it, I assume it's a considerable amount, maybe not so much for Meyer, which is a great corporation, and we, I respect Meyer, I respect Gillespie, but I think, I wanna, so talk a little bit about the analytics.
So I, I can't go, I can't, I can't really go into details. Meyer is a private company, those are considered trade secrets, the analytics and the, the software that we use is all purpose-built for Meyer, so, uh, unfortunately, I cannot share a lot of the information.
The conclusion was, we wanna...
The conclusion was that the sales forecast is very positive, um, the amount of anticipated traffic would rank very highly amongst our fuel fleet, um, if we were to pursue this project. And yes, it is a very significant cost, uh, you know, does it cost the same as a supercenter? Obviously it doesn't, um, but it is, it is a, it's a, a large-scale pro, it's a, it's a scale project that does cost a significant amount of investment, so this isn't something that we just do, um, flippantly, it's something that we very much consider and, and...
I appreciate that, yeah.
Are, are serious about joining the community and, and continuing our investment in East Lansing, um, with another satellite location to that supercenter.
So one thing, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pause here and let my fellow commissioners get in, but one thing that I think we flushed out in this conversation is previous conversations about the outlot on the current Lake, on the current Lake Lansing Meyer, uh, property that is in the city of East Lansing. I know we've had a lot of turnover in our staff, so maybe this is a conversation that took place, uh, without our current commission or without our current staff, uh, but I think that needs to be flushed out. I don't think that if I'm caught in the grocery store and somebody says, oh, why didn't they build, I don't know, right by the, by the store, um, instead of here, I don't think we have a real good answer for that tonight. I think that's, I think that's kind of a biggie in my mind. Am I, am I connecting some dots here, so?
Yes.
Anyway, okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Chaiten, I'm gonna, um, pass over to see if anyone else. Commissioner Genalty have questions for, uh, Mr. Levitt?
Oh, I did have, no, I actually had a question, uh, for staff.
Okay.
And I got caught up in my fellow commissioners' very good questions, and my question seems to have escaped me for the moment.
Okay. That's a first for those, any other questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure, Commissioner Overby.
Thank you. So, so based on, on your responses tonight and our discussion, I, I have two questions, and, and one may repeat things that you've already said, but will you commit to work with the city and the landowners next door to devise a berm or shrubbery or some type of barrier that addresses the concerns of the landowners next door? That's my first question to you.
Yes. We, we will commit to working with the, the neighbors and... Yes. We will commit to working with the neighbors and figuring out a solution that both fits in the area and is satisfactory to both parties for screening purposes and attractiveness.
And my second question is, recognizing that you have made some changes in your proposal regarding the building appearance, are you willing to work with the city to make additional changes to improve the appearance of your design?
It's hard in a vacuum to say yes, but yes, we certainly want to continue the conversation. We are, there is, in no way is this, what we've put in front of you is our last and final offer. Take it or leave it. That is certainly not what we're attempting to say tonight. Tonight is, let's keep the conversation moving. We want to work with staff. We want to work with the commission for a project that everyone is proud of, right? That we want to be part of the community, and we want you guys to be proud of us being part of the community.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? So I appreciate you being here, and I appreciate your willingness to have this dialogue and to, you know, have a real conversation. What would you say to a skeptic who says, look, global change, global warming is real. East Lansing has a real problem with stormwater drain. That is not a wetland, but it does absorb a lot of water and around a lot of concrete. Why would you pave over trees when you have Meyer store half a mile away? You could put, if you work with the city, you could put a gas station there instead.
First, we're here tonight because we have been told previously that we can't put a gas station there, right? I think we've...
I think we need to revisit that, because this is the same planning commission that you had talked to. You know, this is the same city that we would work with, so.
I want to sort of separate those two items. I want to address the question, I think, not necessarily putting aside, but putting on pause, the idea that the gas station could go in front of the store. The city has established their master planning and zoning code. This is a major intersection in the city of East Lansing that, yes, is currently a wooded lot, save for it has not been developed previously. It has never been planned to be dedicated, vacant, open space. Certainly, I understand the issue with the water drainage. We are, to every requirement of the ordinances and the zoning code, we will address necessary procedures and infrastructure that will address any sort of water runoff that the pervious surface will create. So yes, we are developing a section that is currently undeveloped, but in no way do we have any intention of doing anything less than what is necessary to address the environmental impact of what we're doing. We take great pride in at Meyer in being a sustainable company and putting more money than we need to, than we are required to, in virtually every project, so that that sustainability effort is noticeable and makes a difference. That's an important tenet of the company, and so this project wouldn't be any differently. We want to make sure that we are not having an adverse impact in any way on the environment, and that we are adequately designing and installing the infrastructure so that those concerns are alleviated as much as possible.
Great, thank you. Any other commissioner questions? Commissioner Genalty?
Yes, I remembered my question. On, for staff, on page 16 of our packet, Engineering or Public Works and Environmental Services mentioned that they wanted a stormwater plan that documents all stormwater quality and quantity issues, et cetera, et cetera. I think, given Vice Chair Wagner's comments about increased flooding and stormwater being a real issue in East Lansing lately, right, and this is something that the Green Code Committee is really trying to address right now, is staff aware of that concern being resolved?
It is not resolved yet, to my understanding, because they're still in the engineering phase, but they could address it perhaps.
Jim Rosman with Calhoun Engineering and Design. Yes, that is a technical engineering aspect of the project that will be worked through should we gain your approval and the council's approval. Our plan is to provide two, that'll all be connected, but two underground detention systems, one on the east side of the building, one on the north, to comply with the requirements that have been stated in the engineering department's response to our application. Fair?
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Yes.
So here's a beginner question. That lot, if it were a Meyer gas station versus a childcare center, that was beautiful and had the same amount of investment, time value of money over 20 years, how will the city benefit by having a high turnover, a high sales business there versus something that wasn't generating that level of revenue?
I don't know how to answer that, I'm sorry.
So do we get tax dollars just based on the value of the property, or is the income that comes into the business also benefiting the city?
And there is a, yeah, that's a tough one. I don't know if we're prepared to answer that. I can, I was going to say, I could follow up on that and get some information as far as the fiscal impact, but I couldn't answer that tonight.
And then relatedly, who will actually own the property? Is it...
Gillespie.
Gillespie will own it, and if Sheets makes Gillespie a great offer when the lease runs out, Meyer isn't there in perpetuity like they would be in the other property.
I think Mr. Representative from Gillespie is here to speak if appropriate. It's up to the chair.
But as he's coming up, I mean, the request here is to approve the land use of a gas station, which is a special use in this district. So the land use rights, should this be, should you recommend approval in the council to be approved of this? The land use rights would be bestowed of, for a gas station on this property. It could change hands and change brands freely. But I don't know, I mean, it would depend on, I guess, the landowner and who they wanted to sell to.
It goes with the land, the use goes with the land, not the people.
Sure. So before we let him speak, do any other commissioners have a question? Are you want to, are we okay to hear? Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to communicate with the commission a little bit before we vote.
Yes, yeah, yeah. So we don't normally allow, you know, more, we have our audience comment already, but since we have so many questions and, you know, for you and your team, we will allow you to speak, so.
I certainly appreciate that. Thank you to the entire commission. Jason Killday, behalf of Gillespie Group, 330 Marshall Street in Lansing, Michigan. We have other property in the city of East Lansing. We've enjoyed working with the city of East Lansing. We bought this property a little over, I think it's two years now, from the Martin family, who owned the Quality Dairy. They had looked to develop this several times over. They looked to put their own gas station there. They decided to sell it to help take care of some state taxes that were hitting the next generation down. That being said, to Matt's point, you've got Nationals, Sheets, Come and Go, others coming into market. Every one of them has called on this site and has asked, how do we get a control of that site? Obviously, we have not been able to do anything with that, because we've been in agreement with Meyer as we've gone through this process. So to me, as a layperson who actually has some history in gas station business, my family owned Killday Car Care. We had 10, 12 gas stations back in the day. I do understand the business. I do think it's a very lucrative business right now, despite forward-looking, you know, economic concerns with gas and oil and things like that. Like, we're still driving cars, we're still fueling them. There is business to be done here, and I think that's evidenced by the other people. Regardless of Meyer's analytics and, you know, how they look at it, others are looking at it the exact same way. I'm very, very concerned that we're thinking about taking a deal, a potential deal here, and moving it back to a store where they've gone no less than three or four times in my real estate career. I've followed this whole thing down at the supercenters. The city of East Lansing has said no to it time and time again. I don't know if it's neighborhood groups around it. There's some restrictions on other retail centers right across the road where they can't have restaurants and stuff in that retail center, where Country Stitches is. There's something in that area where they have not wanted this service. This property, pending the special use permit, is properly zoned for this use. Regardless of future land use, right now, it's properly zoned for this use, and that's why we have people calling us. So I really am hopeful that we can work together. If there's some design standards, if there's things that we can do as a local developer, citizens here, to help out with that, we're here. I just really hope that we give this the consideration it's due, because if it's not Meyer, we're probably going to be back in here asking you for Sheets, Come and Go, or the next operator. So I appreciate the time. I do appreciate talking. I'm sorry I was late to getting here, so I didn't get my name in. But thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Have you not filled out a...
He did, I've got it, got it here. Yep. Okay, should we have a discussion?
Or a motion?
Motion first. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, just so we can have discussions.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay. Chelsea, all right. Let me pull it up. I'm off that. Where is it?
Page 13 of 188.
Oh, page 13, thank you, Alicia. So here's my concern before I make the motion. I think we need a pause. I don't think we're ready to vote. I'll make a motion just so we can up or down if that's what protocol is here, but I don't think we're ready to vote. I think there's two key questions here. Number one is, we need to track down the history of your being denied on the outlot on Lake Lansing Road by the Meyer store. I know it doesn't connect to Gillespie, but it does connect to the community. And the questions we're going to get, I know for sure, are going to, why didn't they build by the Meyer store where the outlot signs are clearly posted? And all we can say is, well, they told us that they were denied by the city. But I don't think we have traction right now within my vote, speak just for myself, to confirm that that happened, why it happened, and what's the history there. So I'm not ready to vote on that. The other thing that just came up in the last set of comments was, I don't think we are zoned for this properly right now. You're asking to rezone. Isn't that correct?
No.
No, okay.
They're asking for a special use.
Okay, special use, okay. So that's not an issue. All right, okay. Thank you for that.
I wonder, I think I'm sympathetic to my fellow commissioners' concerns that maybe we're not ready to a vote, just given that our discussion has sort of revealed that there might be an opportunity, right, to discuss with the correct municipality about relocating the gas station in front of the Meyer. So if you don't want to make a motion to deny or approve, could you make a motion to defer the vote until our next meeting? I'm just putting that on your, to let you know that you could do that, but I also want to...
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm asking here. I think we need some input from the staff in terms of the history there. I think we've identified that is our municipality, that is city of EL. And again, we need a better answer than to say, well, we were told that we checked that out, but we were told no. I don't know how that dates back, Landon, you'll have to kind of help us with that. So I would, I'm going to make a motion that we defer this vote until we have additional information from our city staff around the question, is this gas station able to be built on the lot, on the site of the current Meyer store? I think that's, I don't know if that's not a motion necessarily, or is it a motion?
Well, let's have a point of, what do we do here? If we do, if we want to defer, do we...
My understanding, Commissioner, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that you would like additional information, which we're going to ask for some, I think, very specific clarity on what information, but you would be making a motion to postpone a vote to a certain time. Or you could also make the motion to, without a certain time, to give staff more time. But I would suggest keeping a timeline on this. If this were to be the next meeting, that'd be April 9th, following would be April 23rd. But you would be making a motion to postpone this, postpone the discussion until a date certain.
So I move...
Question for you.
No, no.
Isn't that a Meyer question, not a planning commission question?
It's a city of East Lansing.
My point, if they have no interest now, that their interest in their investment is here, I mean, we could ask them now, but the point about whether, what is the use for that? If it's going to be another gas station who wants to buy it from Gillespie, I'm not sure that it really matters what we think where Meyer ought to put their gas station, is my question.
Yeah, I think that's a fair question, and that's why I love... That's why I came in open-minded. You know, I wanted to hear what my fellow commissioners said, what we heard from the staff, and how we had dialogue with the group from Meyer. And let me just add, a lot of respect here for Meyer, a lot of respect for Gillespie. I'm just thinking about the questions we're going to face as this gas station is being built, and that's what good commissioners have to think about. So my concern is that we just have that answer in hand before we vote. That would be comfortable for me.
Is that something that Meyer might be able or willing to provide some insight in the next week as well?
I think it's a city issue.
It's a city issue.
It's a city issue.
We're actually, we're just talking amongst ourselves right now, thank you. Sorry.
Sorry.
So, yes.
So it's a city issue to investigate what history exists for applications to the city of East Lansing.
Yep.
And how much time do you need to do that? One meeting or two meetings?
I might be getting a big application here.
I think we should give you...
I mean, make a difference to the elegance as soon as possible.
The one meeting.
One meeting. Okay, so the data, Matt, is?
April 9th.
April 9th. So I move that we postpone this decision until our next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting on April 9th.
Okay. So the motion is, was made by Commissioner Chapin, seconded by Commissioner Silveleski.
Perfect.
Discussion on this motion to defer. Any discussion? Okay, let's take a vote. All in favor? Oh, right, yes.
Could we ask for a little bit more clarity on the information needed before?
Please.
And I guess I would look for any commissioner input, but specifically from Dr. Chapin.
I'll start. I'll start. I would like information, thanks for that, that's a very fair question. I would like information to know if it's possible for the Meyer gas station team to build on the existing Meyer lot, however we want to phrase it, the existing Meyer store lot, where the whole community thinks of Meyer and that outlot, and we've seen that model time and time again with a Meyer gas station on the site of the store. Are they able to do that? Yes or no?
If there was opposition to that in the past, what was that opposition, and who did it come from?
If there was any applications that were submitted, maybe we could see those as well. If there's any documentation as to why they were, you know, maybe refused or denied.
Anything else we'd like staff to prepare for next meeting?
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate, my concern is that we have that information in hand before we vote, because I know the questions that we're going to have to answer as we drive down Lake Lansing Road with my wife or with a friend, and are going to say, how come? And we just have to have that answer in concrete. I respect the Gillespie input here. You know, if Meyer goes elsewhere, then Sheets or whoever, you might be back in front of us. I get that. But this particular issue revolves around Meyer and the input that we've heard tonight, and that's why we have public meetings and good discourse like this.
So are we ready to take a roll call vote?
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Bartley, we take a... Okay, Mr. Bartley, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Certainly, I have a motion on the table, made by Chapin, seconded by Sowolewski, to postpone this, a decision on this, to recommend action by council until the April ninth planning commission meeting. Commissioner Chapin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Denault?
Yes.
Commissioner Overby?
Yes.
Commissioner Putz?
Yes.
Commissioner Sowolewski?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Wagner?
Yes.
The ayes have it, we'll postpone until April ninth.
Okay. Great. Thank you, thank you all for this discussion. Let's move on to the next agenda topic, seven point three of unfinished business, consideration of ordinance fifteen forty-three, amendments intended to be corrections and clarifications to chapter fifty zoning and chapter thirty-two, signs of the East Lansing cities, City of East Lansing's Code of Ordinance. Mr. Bartley.
Thank you. So these amendments, we've discussed, I would say, at some length. These were proposed by staff as clarifications and corrections to make the code easier to understand and easier to administer. We asked the council to introduce the language and refer to you for your review, and they did so on January seventh. I gave you sixty-four pages of red lines, and so we discussed, sort of, the first half of those amendments on January twenty-second, the second half of February twenty-sixth, and then on March twelfth. You held a public hearing for the proposed changes and received no comments. For today, we're just requesting a vote to recommend action by council, and this would come to them at a future date, likely in May. I'm happy to go through any of the proposed amendments as proposed, or as we, I guess, described in previous meetings. There is one item that I would like to bring up, though. In fact, I'd like to share it on the screen momentarily. Okay, here we go. Essentially, I would be looking for the planning commission, if you're amenable to one further change. In staff discussions, or I guess to, we've recently come up with a scenario where we have lots that front on more than one street, and specifically more than two streets, and how to define those. And the code currently essentially says that this would be considered a through lot that fronts on two streets, although, to me, the definition is not quite accurate. So what we're asking to, what we're proposing is, what I pulled up on the screen, for the definition of lots, front, rear, and depth, it talks about the front of the lot being the boundary that borders on the street other than an alley. The case of a through lot is a little more, I guess, nuanced, and, in my opinion, problematic. It defines it as the front lot of a through lot being the one, that which does not border on a major street. However, we have several cases where it may be the most appropriate for that, the front to be considered the major street. So our proposal would be to essentially just strike the language that says, which does not border on a major street, but instead just make it, shall be that boundary which would most conform to adjacent development patterns as designated in the proof plat, or otherwise is determined by myself, which I think is totally reasonable. I guess I just wanted to get your opinion on that, and I guess whether you support it. And then also, we wanted to clarify that elsewhere in the code, lot lines that, for corner lots, lot lines that border on a street but are not considered the front, which in most cases would be the narrower side of that corner lot, are in some places called a corner lot line, in some places called a corner side lot line. And we just wanted to include those into this definition to say, when you have a lot line bordering a street that's not the front, we'll call it a corner lot line or a corner side lot line, as it's referred to elsewhere in the code. And then to make those subject to the setback requirements as defined in that district. However, if there's not a side, a corner lot side setback, or a corner lot setback, I guess lot line setback that's defined in that district, we would want those to be considered, to follow those same setback rules as a front lot line, which is general practice, this, nothing, I would say that's nothing unusual as far as zoning goes. But I wanted to sort of talk about that, and I guess, see if you had questions or concerns or understood that, if you want me to try to explain it better. I know I'm not always the most succinct. And then the sort of corresponding change would be to the definition of a yard, in which case, when we say a side yard, currently it says a side yard is a yard on the same lot with, a yard on the same lot with a building between the side lot line and the nearest sideline of the building, and extending from the rear yard to the front yard. Essentially, we just want to include that the side yard for corner lots would be the yard between the side of the building and the street side that's considered the corner lot line, or the corner side lot line. So I'm not sure if I'm explaining this right, but essentially, just wanted to fill a little gap where we have properties that border on more than one street. In my opinion, this would help clarify, these changes would help clarify those. But always what happens is, as I'm saying this, I'm going, boy, is this really clarifying it. But that might just be my explanation of it versus the actual language. So if you're inclined to recommend approval to council tonight of ordinance fifteen forty-three, which is all these minor zoning amendments, I would just ask that you would also include and the definitions, changes to definitions of lots and yard as proposed by staff on today's date. With that, can I ask you any questions about any of these amendments, this one or anything else, or ask me to restate simpler? Please, I'm open to any questions.
Could you start over with this one? Just kidding. Just kidding. Never mind. Any questions for Mr. Bartley?
Just a comment for Landon. I do have some understanding of what you've just articulated, and I'm going to approve it from my perspective, including in the changes that we make tonight. And I appreciate your explanation, and I need nothing further.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
No, I think just major kudos to staff for going through this process in a much more professional and detail-oriented way than we possibly could.
Yes. I agree.
Yeah, this is a boatload of work.
And if I may, this is just the start. I would love to bring more ordinance changes to you, but I, when I do so, and I think that they'll, this is meant to not be any policy changes, like I mentioned, just corrections and clarifications. We have several amendments that we would like to bring forward, that we're talking with council members about the viability of those changes, but we may be bringing more forward to you, especially after the comp plan update gets adopted later this year. I just want to sort of let you know to anticipate additional ordinance change requests. That said, please approve this.
Is there a motion?
If I can find it. Here we go, I found it. Move to recommend approval by City Council of ordinance fifteen forty-three, amendments intended to be corrections and clarifications to chapter fifty zoning and chapter thirty-two signs of the City of East Lansing's Code of Ordinances for the following reasons. First, the proposed amendments are consistent with the goals and objectives of the city's 2018 comprehensive land use plan. Second, the amendments as proposed are not intended to result in changes to policies or how specific land uses are regulated within the city. And three, the proposed amendments will improve the ease of understanding and administering the zoning and sign ordinances. And furthermore, the planning commission recommends approval of the following amendments. Let me see if I have captured Mr. Bartley's language, which includes Mr. Bartley's suggestions that he outlined today, changes to definitions of lots and yards as recommended by staff.
Thank you.
Well done, Commissioner Denault.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Overby? Any discussion?
I just, I do want to recognize that this is a lot of work. It's very detailed. I've done this type of work, and I know it can be mind-numbing, and we appreciate it and recognize your good efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I want to just point out that I have a great team, and Grace Whitney especially, has been a great help in crafting these amendments, so thank you, Grace.
Well, thank you all, city staff. So let's have a vote, those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we are on to topic eight, new business, eight point one, consideration of extension of a previously approved site plan, request by Timber Sauna Company, Daniel Downs, to install a seasonal sauna park in the vacant lot at two seventy West Grand River Avenue for one year to expire May second, twenty twenty-six. Mr. Bartley?
I'm going to defer to Ms. Wright on this one.
Ms. Wright.
So as identified, the applicant has requested an extension for one year. They were here last fall and received approval, went through council for site plan, and was also approved. They've had some challenges in trying to sort out the requirements for the building code and the actual site plan, which the most recent version of the site plan is up front. It's not different than what you saw, it's just got some more clarity regarding the building permit. Because they haven't actually completed, they wouldn't likely be able to install the project and take use of it if it expires April thirty-first. So the request is for an extension, but no changes.
May first.
May first, excuse me. And Daniel is here, Mr. Downs, to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions, or would we like to discuss this before we have, we invite Mr. Downs to the podium, or should we just let him speak and then ask questions? So, Mr. Downs, would you mind coming up and sharing your extension plans with us?
Daniel Downs with Timber Sauna Company, here in Lansing, based out of Lansing. So, yeah, the idea is to install a temporary sauna park that's seasonal. The challenge becomes Michigan building code and temporary, and so we're sorting that out right now with the building department, and we need more time. There's not a lot of precedence for something like this, especially in our region. There are, throughout the country, things that have happened of this nature. In Boston, I can speak to that more, as it's more recent. Moki Sauna was installed in the Greenway, which is a nonprofit downtown Boston, and they have a special permit to use that Greenway, that's owned by the nonprofit, as a seasonal use. The structures that were moved there, we built, and they were part of a site plan that was approved by, I imagine, which would be Boston City Council. There wasn't a permanent building code applied to that site for the structures, for the plan, from what I understand. And so we're trying to figure out here, because Michigan building code's different than other building codes nationwide. So working with planning commission or planning department and staff, we're trying to figure out how we can get this done while we're also meeting code. So somewhat of a challenge, I guess. Are there any questions?
Actually, I have a question. And I know we talked about this on the phone, but can you talk a little bit about the, so you're looking to extend the approval until May second of twenty twenty-six, including all the time between now and then? So let's say that you get through your building code issues, and you want to open sooner than late fall, or whenever. We talked about some sort of subscriptions or different parties that had contacted you and said, we'd love to do this sooner. What kind of business do you expect, I guess, before winter? Or do you contemplate before December or October? Do you see business happening during the summer this year, if you were approved for the extension today?
Great question, yeah. I think that the business is going to be different, being the nature of East Lansing and having campus here. Had a lot of groups that have reached out since early December of twenty-four, running groups, workout groups. You can imagine, like, anybody that's into health and wellness, saunas are really popular right now. Ever since, even before COVID, but especially after COVID, there's been an emphasis on public health and well-being, and opportunities, and we talked about, you know, some of the water issues in East Lansing, it comes up with most applicants. We've thought a lot about that site, talking to DTN and a landscaping consultant that we've been working with. And now, the current site plan is what it is, but there could be future for that site to take out all of the concrete and potentially add benefit for either both drainage and adding greenery and nature kind of back into the city. Now, it's not part of this proposal, so I don't want to lead you guys on too much, but we see that site as a possible multi-use, potentially, if we're just seasonal, maybe we're only approved to use it during a one-hundred-and-eighty-day type period for temporary use. Someone else could come in and use it potentially for some other seasonal use. It meets low-density, I think, business for the city, and also, I would argue, helps the city with a comprehensive plan with health, is one of the major headlines for it. So to answer your question, I think that the summertime business would be significant just with the groups, and it's not as cold outside, so people are more active. Sauna is popular year-round, but here in Michigan, it's really popular when it's colder out. You get that natural contrast of being in a hot sauna and then going outside, you know, when the temperature's colder, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for our applicant?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Chapin, please.
Hey, welcome back. Sorry it didn't work out. So in your letter here, written on, you know, March eleventh, you have said, we have been delayed significantly with the building permit process and getting professional drawings. I think you address that in somewhat. What about ownership or lease agreement with the property owner? Do you have that in play right now, in hand?
Great question. Do you want me to answer now, or you want to ask more questions?
I know, I'd like to, I got a couple more.
Okay.
You ask, let's go one at a time.
One at a time. Okay, cool. Yeah, so we're-
We're just trying to get to the, just trying to get to the bottom.
Yeah, so DTN, approaching them in the beginning, the agreement, the lease agreement with them, I'm not going to talk about dollar amounts, but is contingent on us passing the permitting. And they've expressed to me, you know, that we're, I have a sample lease agreement from them that we'll execute as soon as we get approval. Because in my mind, in their mind, it didn't make sense to sign a big lease if the city didn't see this fitting in with their plan. And so, yes, there has been great discussion about the use of that property and the lease once it's approved and we have built a permit passed.
So somebody is still is out there on the market, if, for lack of a better word? If someone were to come along with money in hand and outbid you, would you not have that property?
Potentially, yeah. Yep.
Okay.
But again, this is an odd thing to a degree, because we're not a developer with lawyers and architects coming in. We're a small, you know, startup company, and we don't have all those resources to sign a lease agreement and spend tens of thousands of dollars to propose something and then get, have that not work out. We can't afford that necessarily, so we're going about it in a scrappy way, and I hope that makes sense.
I just think we need to get that out, out in front of the commission, that you haven't signed a lease, and you don't, and it's out there, leasable, if you will.
Yeah.
And you are working with the owner, but you don't have a lease signed right now.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Commissioner Chapin, if I can just interject for a moment.
Please.
If there's a question about whether or not the landowner, DTN, was, I guess, aware, or, like, they signed off on the application as landowner, so we, I guess, as far as the applicant standing to apply, he's all set. But as far as the lease, that was being held off, as you mentioned, to be executed until land use approvals obtained.
If you're interested in who I was working with over there, I can give those names as well, but-
No, that's fair. I think we addressed that. So I just kind of want to get a couple things out there. So when I drove by after we approved this, you know, I've been on that corner as a kid riding my bike, and I was expecting, it looks to me like there is parking, I thought there was a bigger spot there for you. Now there's some parking spots. Can you, maybe it's in the packet, but I wasn't able to track it down. It looked to me like- It looked to me like, help me Chelsea, it's not the peanut barrel now, what's, what's our?
Crunchies.
Crunchies. Crunchies has expanded their parking lot, it's right there. Okay, all right. So you are not in the Crunchies parking lot right now. Where it's lined for parking, that's not your, your, what you're talking about, correct?
So the, the parking is, is owned by DTN as well. Crunchies is not allowed to use it. Those are all leased to residents in the area.
Ah, okay.
So those leases come up at the end of the semester.
All right.
And then we've let DTN know that we're, we're wanting to pursue, again, it's a timing issue now, wanting to pursue all of the parking spaces around the lot.
Okay.
So that are connected to it. As you can see, it's kind of that L shape where the parking would be around it. But again, if we lease those parking spots and this doesn't work out, then we're stuck with a bunch of parking spots. So, a little bit of a cart before the horse thing, we're, we're trying to figure that out.
All right, thanks a lot.
But as far as, yeah.
Sort of fumbling through this a little bit. So my last question is, DDA appears is meeting tomorrow?
Yes.
I think I saw that in, in some board packet info. I know they wrote a letter of support back in October. Is the sense that they still support this continuation?
Hey, it's hard to speculate before tomorrow, but we believe that the DDA will be supporting it.
Okay.
And if I may, just really quick, just to your question about the sort of amount of the part of the lot that would be used, so you can see where the former building outline was, sort of at the corner closest to Grand River, which is at the bottom of the screen, and Delta sort of toward the left. This section, the southwest corner, closest to that corner, that intersection, 2,700 square feet is what's proposed for the sauna park, and the rest would remain parking.
Okay.
That's still controlled and owned by DTN.
So originally, when we talked about that, that was the space, the spur footage that we talked about?
That's correct, and nothing has materially changed in that sense.
Any other commissioner questions or concerns? Is anyone ready to make a motion? Do we have to make a motion? What, what do we do procedurally?
We don't have a sample motion for you. If, if you're inclined to approve this, or you would just say, "Move to recommend approval of the extension as requested by the applicant", or something to that effect.
I would make a motion. I, I move that we request the extension as proposed by the applicant. I think that was what you said. And does this then go to city council? Is that the next step?
It does.
So we're, we're recommending approval, we're recommending that city council approve this extension.
That's correct.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Overby and a second by, by Commissioner Denault. Any discussion?
I just, I just want to thank the applicant for sticking with us until the end of our meeting. It's been an arduous meeting for you, perhaps, and we appreciate that you stayed and, and are here to answer questions for us, so thank you.
I appreciate you persevering and, and with your project and staying here, even though there's been delays and stuff like that.
We do appreciate your persevering with your project.
You're welcome, Commissioner. Thank you.
Okay, so let's take a vote. Those in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to number nine, commissioner concerns. Are there any commissioner concerns this evening?
I think we've got a stellar job, Chair.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have a concern. I wish Joseph were, were back. But thank you all for persevering here. And no, it wasn't as bad as it could have been, I think.
You did a nice job.
You did great.
Yeah, you did a great job.
Thank you so much, Chair.
Okay. Okay, then, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Move by Commissioner Over, Overby, seconded by Commissioner Putz. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We are adjourned at 9:05.